Hello, everybody.
Hey, Dan.
I think Jennifer got us into the meeting.
No, it was Julie.
Julie did. Thank you so much, Julie. I asked Jennifer to.
Group effort with this.
Thank you. So Julie, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you do the username and you type in meeting post.
It's meetingpost1@outlook.com.
Right. Are you able to put a capital M?
Yeah.
I can't put a capital M.
I think you have to. So yeah, I'm not sure why you can't, but I think that's essential.
Yeah, so I think that's my problem. And I don't know, I mean, my capitals work. I tried using capital lock. I don't know what's going on, but I think maybe in advance of the meeting, if we could figure out who can log on, that would be great. I hate to waste anybody's time. All right, so I believe we have a quorum. Is that right? Yep, there's at least three of us here. All right, so we'll open the meeting at 7:04. And the first item on the agenda is public hearings. All right, if there are no public hearings, we'll move on to review of the agenda and perpetual calendar. I did look at the perpetual calendar. I think the only sort of difference was the Our Town Newsletter will be going out this month in January instead of December. I did send all of you a draft of what I was going to send to the town. I did end up sending that draft. I sent that all to you because although I'm chair and it's my responsibility, I try to represent the committee as best I can, and I send that to all of you for your input, and I always appreciate any edits, changes, so thank you. So I think that was the only thing there. One of the items to be looking at is capital improvements for the town budget. So capital improvement items are going to be on tonight's agenda as well. And that's it for the agenda and perpetual calendar, unless anyone has anything else to say about that. If not, we'll move to warrants and gifts. Steve.
Hey, I have some warrants. All right. I have a payroll warrant from 12/27/21 in the amount of $82,798.29. I have a payroll warrant from January 10th, number 314, in the amount of $82,459.83. And I have a warrant dated January 24th, 2022, number 315, in the amount of $82,250.93. And I have two accounts payable, number 3014 from 12/27/21, in the amount of $20,238.32. And number 3015 from January 12th, 2022, in the amount of $20,752.73.
Trevor, do you have all of those? Excellent. Okay, so let the record show that warrants have been submitted and Trevor has a record of those. Any gifts? Probably not, if there are. Okay. Do we have approval of the minutes from December 16th, 2021, and looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and all those in favor, roll call. Haze I.
Martell, I.
Tom, speak with I.
Rose, I.
Sullivan, I.
All right. Unfinished business, updates on capital projects. Steven.
Yeah, so the roof is still in a holding pattern. They've asked for an extension through April of 2022, and it was definitely given to them, and they're just waiting for the materials to arrive.
Okay, so the holding pattern is for a repair of the roof, or is this for the engineers?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, this is to actually replace the gym roof where they did the drainage work inside just before school started in late August, and they will, no, this is to do the gym roof as a replacement. It's a 200 and something thousand dollar job that was approved at town meeting last year.
Okay, and so now we have someone lined up to do it, and it's been postponed until April?
I believe they'll try and do, they may try and do it if they have the materials February vacation, and if not, they'll do it April vacation.
Okay, so they can do it while people are in the school and all that?
No, that's why they have to do either February vacation or April. They can't do it while there's people in the building.
Okay, and that will be enough time to do the repairs?
That'll be enough time to do the replacement. Yeah, they're gonna replace the whole roof.
Okay, and that money has been budgeted and appropriated?
Yes, that was all, that was all voted at town meeting last year. It's all, it's, it's just waiting for the materials and then it's done.
Okay. It, so the, the grants, that was not, that was denied, that we weren't accepted, that grant was to help pay for the roof, is that right?
That's correct. We were denied for the entire roof, not just the gym, but the rest of the school too. So we voted last year as a school committee to approach the town administrator and spend the $27,000 in school choice funds to hire that consultant slash engineer that got this thing rolling, and now it's half done.
Okay, so it's in the works, it's gonna be done, the mother's money, money's appropriated for it, we're just now waiting.
That is correct.
Okay, that's excellent. I was a little confused because I, I, I thought there was discussion at the finance committee regarding how to pay for it. Is that true, or?
I don't, that may be the rest of the roof. Oh, Susie can answer that.
Right. Yeah, that was for, so the roof project that's split into parts. The gym part of it was approved and has started to move forward till the supply chain did not allow it to be completed. In the meantime, as I understand, the Bruce applied again for an MSB grant to fund the second part of the roof. Vaca turned down, the state continues to move the goalposts. Now they're out to 28 years for a roof when it started at 20, or it was said you could apply after 20, and they've moved it four times for us. Thank you very much, along with every other town that had a, has a building our age. And so without the grant, the finance committee discussed where that leaves the roof, and it will be part of the capital plan, needs to talk about what we can do next. At the FinCom meeting, we talked about getting the engineering planned out for the second part of the roof and trying to get that. Natalie Blay and Becky are working on having the MSB come out and look at the holes in the roof, look at the leaks, and try to convince them that they really can't keep doing this, where whatever pot of money they have, they don't have enough to fund this. That's not acceptable. And so Natalie Blay and Becky may end up being able to apply for a grant again, but if not, the town needs to move forward with an engineering plan and start lining up repairing the other part of the grant, I mean, the other part of the roof, and so and we're in COVID, and the supply chain issues are real. So we'll see how swiftly attending to the second part of the roof can be done.
So as far as the second part of the roof goes, are we going to plan on doing the repairs to the roof, and it'll either be paid for from the grant money or through town funds if the grant money doesn't come through?
It's not a decision yet. It's figuring out what the pieces are and putting the pieces into a plan. The delay initially about how the both parts of the roof were gonna be repaired was partly because it was normal to accept, to expect a grant from the state to help manage this. The fact that the state is not acting on that is not only disappointing, it's very dis, it's dysfunctional, and it's probably dysfunctional for other towns. The state still has a building fund that they are planning to build new schools with, but why they don't have enough money to repair things that they already built, I have no idea, and it feels like a political football, which is part of why I tried to ask Bruce on his last meeting. The state has this giving money with one hand and taking it back with the other, and, and this, this is not acceptable. So Natalie Blay is working to get people out here and look up at things. I can't believe you can just say, oh yeah, roof's supposed to last 28 years, not 20, but that's what they've done four times. So hopefully, I can't imagine how many towns are trying to figure out how to repair their roofs, and this is replaced. This is not repair. And that's why it's a very, very expensive endeavor for small towns, and we are not alone in this.
Thank you. Before I come to you, Jennifer, I apologize for asking so many questions. I wanted to attend that meeting, but I couldn't. I had a conflict. I have asked twice for a recording of the meeting, but I haven't had a response. I did wanna review that meeting so that I would have more information. I wouldn't have to ask you so many questions, but I'll just keep trying on that. But you were able to answer a lot of my questions, so thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for the information, Susie. So not this evening, but I'm hoping at perhaps our next meeting, if we could discuss a process by which we could have information shared between our building liaison, the building committee, the FinCom, and us, so that it's clear and we're not asking lots of, lots of questions or waiting to hear. I think, you know, we get information when we come to a school committee meeting, but if there was some sort of process established, I feel like that would be super, super helpful for all the parties involved on the school side and the town side. So I'd like to ask if that could be added to a future agenda.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think process is important, and we just need to make sure we have a clear process and, you know, determining what we need, how are those needs addressed, who addresses them, all of that. So just clarity, and maybe we can do that in some sort of a combined meeting with other departments. Yes, Susie?
I, I guess my confusion also comes from what the Union 28 Business Office and people were discussing and planning, because I don't, I did not find out that the grant didn't come through until I sort of deciphered a message from Bruce at the last meeting. That, that was not made clear to me, and, and I'm the liaison to the FinCom. And so the other people on the FinCom hadn't been informed. So somehow, there's, there's got to be some communication. There is a capital planning group. They, they do get to hear what is happening, but who, who should tell them? And where is that information coming from?
And what? I do agree with that, Susie, and I'm hoping with a new person in the, the Finance and Operations Department, that there is clearer process and clearer communication. And so that's why I'm sort of putting this out there. We have a new business person, and if we could establish a process by which we could all receive the same information at the same time, I think it would be helpful with everybody's busy schedule. So that's why I bring it up this evening.
Absolutely. And Susie, I hope you didn't take what I was saying, or the fact that we're talking about a process that we're pointing at any fingers at anyone. You're right, there needs to be a good system in place for communicating information all the way around. You should have known about the, the, the grant not coming through. You know, even the school roof project, that seems to have been a lot of confusion about the two pieces to that. So anyhow, we'll just try to all work on a good system of being able to communicate information.
Yes, and as I said, Susie and Dan, I did bring it up because we have a new person in the office, so establishing processes with a new person feels like a great place to start. So thank you.
And I wanna reiterate, it's not reasonable that the state is doing this for five, for four times.
That, I agree, it's frustrating, and the last time I was out with Jackie, we thought for sure we were getting the roof repaired, and the MSBA people were there, and they were like, oh no, we're here for the boiler. So I feel your frustration and share it.
Yes, Steven.
Yeah, so speaking of the moving of the goalposts, one of the problems is that at the regional level, the middle school is the same age, exact same age as Chutesbury, and they're, you know, they're receiving that same letter on the same day that Chutesbury gets, but as far as capital items in the capital planning, which meets on Monday, I don't have anything that is, you know, small things for this year, although we maybe, I do wanna tack on the slider for the library, but other than that, it's gonna, you know, we just want them to make known that we're gonna be looking at, we want the school painted and stained and all of the rotted wood replaced. I mean, it looks so bad now, we should do it before the roof gets replaced, because who knows when that's gonna be? And we need the parking lot paved too, because that's really starting to fall apart. So those are the, those are the things I'm gonna bring forward from, for the school, unless Jackie's got something she would like me to bring on Monday.
Jackie, if you don't mind, before you speak, yeah, I, I agree. I think that the priorities, as, as I understand them, are the roof project, first part being the leaking part. I suppose the second part is also very important, along with the gutters, which is part of that project. The heating system, the update to the electronics, that is a priority.
That's in, in process, too.
Right, so those would be the priorities, and then, you know, I did get your email. I think the, the painting and, and that needs to also happen. The parking lot, you did mention in there the sidewalks. Is there still a problem with the sidewalks?
Are you speaking to me?
Either you or Steve. It is, it was in, in the list of things that he sent to us.
Um, Steve, do you wanna talk, or do you want me to?
You can go first, and then I'll, I'll piggyback on.
Yeah, about the sidewalk, the sidewalks in particular, I mean, we, like, they don't, they're not great. So there's definitely some heaving, and what we're having now is that if you, for example, if you walk like across the, the crosswalk section of the main entrance to go up onto the sidewalk, because also our parking lot is in such bad repair, what, what's happening now is, especially after the last few plows, you know, nobody's fault, just plowing, like our, our area, the, the cement is, is coming up from the road, which is then eating up onto the sidewalk. And so that's happening in the front, but it's also happening along the side. The, all of the sidewalk slash cement on the cafeteria side of the building is pretty strong. That looks fine. We've been using it, we used it all fall to eat lunch on. That's great. It's really the, right near the, they're the front entrance, and then the nurse's office, my office side, that's not looking so hot. But honestly, we could handle the sidewalks a little better than the, the parking lot itself is starting to get, well, not starting to, is continuing to get pretty tough. Steve, and you're, you're, you know your roads better than me, so you have a little better, you could probably explain things better.
Yeah, so the, the concrete issue or the cement issue is because the parking lot has failed, and that, that concrete is actually there to hold the base of the granite curbing in place. And so the, the parking lot is cracking and falling apart and settling, so the concrete's coming up through because the parking lot actually never had a top coat put on it. That's actually just the base. So it's, it's only a thin pavement anyway, and it's been on there way too long. And as far as the sidewalks, the only issue that I know of is where a former custodian took bags of cement and poured his own pad up close to the side entrance by the cafeteria between that and the sheds in the gym. And what I noticed, because I walk the dog there at least once or twice a week, that our salt that, that the school is using to melt the ice is actually eating that concrete where the bags were poured, and it's punky and has holes in it. So that, whether we replace the rest of the sidewalk or not, we're gonna really have to look at tearing that piece out, even if we just filled it with gravel or something, but it really, that part's gonna have to get replaced soon.
Okay, and Jackie, did you have other items that you wanted to bring up?
Those are big. We actually just had an issue with our phones. We had to reset our phones, and we kind of need to up, well, we do need to upgrade our phone system, and actually, the, the technician who helped us was like, you're like the only school left on this system, and you really need to take a look at that. But honestly, some of the other things, I mean, that matters, but the, what's really helpful is obviously the gym roof. And I, I am so grateful that that's looking like it's gonna happen, like very, very grateful. And the heating piece, that's also, I'm so grateful that that's being looked into and in progress. It feels great. But I do have to say, and I know it, it might be superficial on the outside, but there's some real significance to it. The building on the outside's looking really rough, for lack of a better word. It's the inside, they, you know, Matt and when Andy was here, they took such great care of it. It's looking really great inside. I mean, they replaced countertops and they, they got rid of mold places, and they, they did all this deep cleaning and painting, and it looks so great. And then on the outside, it's, it's rotting, the, it's peeling, like it's really not representative of the hard work that's being put into the building itself, and then what's going on inside. So I do totally understand if the town thinks that we need to repair the roof before we spend the $25,000 doing whatever we need to, to the outside. But I did wanna say, it's been mentioned to me by a handful of families, by some other people in town that have business in the school, wondering like, what's going on with that? And if, are you gonna paint it? And what, and why does, why is there mold on the front of the building? And so I think that that, and Steve knows too, like that's something I'd really like to be on the, on the front burner.
So one of the main reasons and points of having this discussion tonight is because Steve is going to be going to the next Capital Planning Committee meeting, so he needs to have sort of a list. So obviously, we know.
I always have a running list too, and that's shared with you all, and so everything's always on that document.
Right, so Steve, you'll have the running list, and I think in terms of process, again, I'm gonna speak out of turn. I'm not sure exactly where this process is, but Jackie, to your point about the outside of the building, I think what needs to happen is the Buildings Committee needs to look at that. Maybe there's another option or a different solution. If, if the wood is rotting, maybe they need to do something different than just stain over it. I don't know, but they would know. I'm not, I'm not a siding person. So Steve, if we can introduce the Buildings Committee into looking at what is the best solution to making the aesthetics and, and the physical structure of the outside of the building look good and function properly. We don't want rotting and moldy wood. Okay?
Yes, and one of the exciting things about the replacement of the gym roof is that our poorly designed gutter system is gonna be gone because the drains are inside, are in the roof, and will air tied into our storm drain system. And that, that's one of the big issues that when this school was, the addition was built, there, there was no, no thought whatsoever to even put in gutters and downspouts on, so that's why it looks like it does now.
Right, and that'll address a lot of issues, including the look of the outside of the building and the heaving of the sidewalks. So we're in the right direction. So you have a list to bring with you to the Capital Planning Committee, and we know to inform the Buildings Committee of next steps on the exterior. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, I have, I have the, the running list that Jackie keeps going, and I, I have it tucked safely away.
Okay, so moving forward, as far as a committee, I'm going to ask that we keep on unfinished business, updates on capital projects. So that will be there every month. Okay? Anything else on capital projects? Susie? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Okay. I feel like the process clarification is, is still a piece of this that I don't understand. I don't, I do think that the Buildings Committee is supposed to have an inventory of all the town buildings, and then that would help make a prediction about when things need to be replaced. And it's true that Jackie lives in the building, probably 24/7, and she gets to see stuff happen. But again, there's a lot of pieces moving here, and the Building Committee has some responsibility to know what kinds of tasks are, the school is facing. If we only wait for the people to say, this needs to be done, that needs to be done, is that the best use of the principal's time? So I feel like we need to get this more clarified in terms of what our, I mean, the Buildings Committee could make a prediction and tell Jackie, what, how does this part look? How's that doing? Because they could have the anticipation that a building of this age would need to have that addressed. So rather than wait for it to be a problem, or a problem that somebody in the building notices and, and advocates for, I feel like this whole process, and it's not just the school, needs to be improved so that we're not playing from behind all the time.
I agree, and you have to remember, I'm a, I'm a teacher and a principal, certainly not a Buildings Person. So although, you know, I work with Matt and Steve comes in sometimes, or like we, it is true that there should be maybe somebody that knows a little more, coming in and taking a look and supporting me in that, us in that, so that. And we talked about that before, like, you know, I think Dan and I even a few years ago were like, we need to actually write like a list process, like we're, we're noticing, number one, Jackie contacts, you know, so and so, because they're concerned about so and so. Number two, Jackie fills out, like whatever, tell me to do, I'll follow any. Number two, Jackie fills out like whatever, tell me to do, I'll follow any process. But it's for me, it's like I go to the people that I think I should go to and let them know and um, but it's not, it's it is still a little sticky sometimes. And Steve, and I go to Steve a lot and I say, Steve, can you bring this up? Because I don't know what else necessarily to.
And that's what I meant, Jackie, that we have to have a process. And it, you know, we need input from the building committee and the town side for the on the process. So we're all on the same page.
Right. Steve and then Lauren.
So yeah, so the responsibilities of the buildings committee is being looked at right now by the select board. And because the whole time I've been on the buildings committee, we've never looked at any buildings to see. We've never made a list of any of the town buildings. So that's something that the select board has asked us to do. And we're getting on to it now. But yeah, so I've Jackie, I've got your list and it's always in my back pocket. And I talk about every every chance that I get.
Thank you. Lauren.
I remember this coming up and at the time um, I spoke to different parties. Like I spoke to some people from the buildings committee. At the time, I spoke to um, our town administrator. And there were different ideas about how the process should work. And I don't feel like that process. I mean, the school committee certainly isn't defining that process. So I I wasn't really able to move it forward. So I'm not really sure what the next step would be. And um, you know, some time has passed, so I there may be different um, thoughts and feelings involved. But I I I'm not sure who needs to put this process together.
And I also, I also just want to say on this document, maybe there needs to be like these shared documents and a process of reviewing said documents. But on the document that I have that is a Google Doc, and I think everyone has access to it and I'll give it to you. I also, since I've been there, you know, eight years, I've listed historically what we've done. Because there also needs to be a record of like, what have we actually done and when, like in a formalized way? So I have my own school document that I'm doing that on, you know, from two thousand fourteen on. But but that is something like maybe there, maybe we need to talk about having some sort of a place, a town where everyone in the town that needs to can access that information. And I don't know what that would look like.
So I'm gonna mention this uh, and and Jennifer, I'm gonna say it to you, but Caitlin, I'm talking about you. Uh, your 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 role is director of finance and operations. Is that right? So I do believe you you're going to have a big role in this. And um, your difficult, the difficult part for you is that you're going to be dealing with five towns, four schools. And each town may be doing things differently. From what I surmise from you, you are a very organized person and perhaps can begin to codify how we do this. And maybe you you could help be a part of figuring out a process that works. Um, or or, you know, because I do think you're you are an integral part of this. And I'm gonna go give an example. I know when we were working on those sliders, the doors to the atrium or atrium or courtyard. Or guard. You know, I I was under the impression the buildings committee had a plan. And then I I remember talking with Bruce and Bruce said, oh, we're we're gonna go with a door that's like a storefront door. And again, I'm just like, all right, whatever. We just need doors there. Like, I don't know one from the other or and but then I heard from the buildings committee, oh, that's not a good door because of this and that and had all these reasons. And I called Bruce and I'm asking Bruce questions. And it just seemed like, oh, wait a second. This is again, this is where I know there's gotta be a better way. There just has to be a better way. So I'm gonna Caitlin, Steve, and then Lauren.
So these meetings are gonna help me catch up to what what the what's going on right now. So we can kind of figure out a process and move forward. So um, really appreciate being here and in more means I can kind of get a sense of of how this committee functions and what we need to do. Um, we'll get stronger.
Great. Thank you. Stephen and then Lauren.
Yeah. So I share Jackie's list with the capital planning committee every year. And Jackie does a fantastic job of keeping that thing updated and listing the things that we've completed. And so they do, they they see that list every single year.
Thank you for doing that. Lauren.
And my understanding too, from the different um, research that I did was that the buildings committee is the advisory board and ultimate decisions don't lie with the buildings committee, which may be why one door was chosen that was different from what and I and I don't and as on the school side, we don't know any of that. So part of it is a communication issue and part of it is um, other people's issue, which I'm not sure how best to address, but um.
And that's where I think the process will help, right? And I apologize for leaving the meeting, but a stink bug flew, got a little bit tangled in my hair and then I had to go kill it. So I'm sorry when I jumped up.
Oh, well, maybe it's good we're remote. All right. So are we all pretty clear with our capital planning projects?
And I think Caitlin and I will brainstorm after this meeting and then connect with the chair and um, Stephen, and then we'll figure out how to connect with the buildings committee and the select board and move the whole process forward. So thank you all for that really good discussion.
Yeah, I do appreciate it too. And Caitlin, I do appreciate I I I you you, you know, you're working for for the Union Twenty Eight, but you report to Jennifer. So I'm not, I don't want to put anything on your plate. That's up to Jennifer to do. Um, but you know, we're trying to work with Jennifer and I appreciate your flexibility and cooperation, but she knows your workload better than than I do. So we'll all work through this together. So thank you. All right. The next draft budget. So Caitlin, that might be you, right?
Yes, that is me. So I have a budget presentation. Um, I did want to answer any questions about the expenditure report though first, if anyone had any questions about that.
I did not have any questions on the expenditure report, but
Okay.
what I will say, um, that is a very difficult document to really read and understand, and it really means nothing to me. So what I would ask from you is that if there is ever something alarming that we need to know, uh, you need to tell us because we're not going to get it in that report.
Of course. And so what what stands out to me on the expenditure report is that we do need to move some money from different lines because there are things that are that it should be being paid out of Esser or out of school choice that was budgeted that way that isn't right now. So Jackie and I, um, in the next couple of weeks, are going to kind of sit down with payroll and figure out how we can readjust that. Um, and I can be more, I can have more to say about that next next month.
Perfect. Thank you. And just let us know when we need to move money, if it's in an account that has to go from one to another with our approval.
Yeah. And you have to bear with me. I haven't used Zoom in a while. So um, Jen, I need to be able to share my screen to do the presentation unless you would like to share it or.
I I know I'm accidentally kind of the host, but I don't A, know how to make someone else a co-host and B, how to do anything on Zoom. So.
You go go to the share screen button. Um, there should be a little in the upper right hand corner. There should be a little um, carrot that you can click to give you options. And then there should be a an option that says multiple people can present simultaneously.
I just that. I just did that.
And so now Caitlin should be able to just click share screen.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Not only is Trevor minute taker, he's Zoom guide and so much more.
No, hold on. I'm in a demo. Is that you see my screen?
I know we see the demo.
Okay, there we go. This is where I'm supposed to be. Okay, so we put together um, some a look back on money that was spent last year and what we're doing with it and where the building is now, the building and the school is now initiatives. And then then we get into the budget of what we're looking for for next year. So here are some initiatives for uh, Union Twenty Eight and some of specific shoots very elementary school initiatives. I'm not going to read through every line, but I'll give you a little time to read and um, before I move on.
Can you, were you just talking to me?
Uh, no, not specifically.
Okay, sorry. I was chilling with my dog.
Oh, no, it's okay. I was just saying about some of the longer slides, I'm not going to read every line of. Um, but I'll I will project them a little longer. So here's some pictures from inside our school and some of the things that are happening, like the school-wide self-portrait mural, which is beautiful. And the hallway art display. And some of the outside learning and nature. And the kindergarten forest Fridays and outside learning time. And nature's classroom science instruction. So some of the initiatives that we've had at the school are kind of getting kids more more outside. And some of the facility initiatives last several years. Uh, the conference room slider doors are completed, gym roof, HVAC controls and library floors are in progress. And some things that we're just talked about for for discussion for the coming years and for the following, you know, coming budgets. And a history of recent capital improvements. So some of the relief money we've used for the Esser funds to be used for enhanced core instruction, professional development, targeted student support, staffing, social, emotional and mental health supports, school health and safety. So these four positions are paid out of funds. Um, the school adjustment counselor, the interventionist, some pair educator and professional development are paid out of those funds that we're getting. Student support services grants totaled eighty six thousand nine hundred ninety eight dollars this year. And staff adjustments, uh, we've funded a point five adjustment counselor, point six E and cell teacher, a full-time essential skills teacher, three pair educators. And all of those are coming from Esser grants and a little bit in some school choice money. So here's we get into the budget. This is the allocation for Union Twenty Eight. So in FY twenty two, Chute's Berry accounted for twenty three point three percent of the entire Union's enrollment. FY twenty three, it is reduced a little bit to twenty two point zero percent. So this slight reduction in the proportion of Chute's Berry um, part of the district is what you're gonna see on the next couple of slides when we look at most of the the Union Twenty Eight budget. So you'll see small changes to a lot of the lines. And that's not because we we reduce the budget by a few dollars or or so. It's because the allocation for Chute's Berry is just a little bit less. Most of these are the same amount district wide. Here is the second part of administration. So you're gonna see a reduction of Union Twenty Eight cost by four thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars. Oh, this also accounts for the amendment to the Union Twenty Eight um, budget last at the last meeting, um, which reduced it a little further with the director of finance salary. There's three pages that are gonna look at the instruction funding. Now, the budget you're seeing right now is a little different than the budget you saw back in November, December, because I did not include the positions that are going to be paid for by Esser and school choice funds. So in order to kind of accurately look at what the budget was last year or for FY twenty two versus twenty three, I removed those positions and that part of the funding. So we have seen kind of a an increase in um, some pair educator salaries, uh, especially in the ones that are tied to special ed. There's just been increased need for them. So we we have a bit more money in that. And the third page shows a total increase for instruction of fifty two thousand eight hundred thirty one dollars. Other school services, a slight increase. And a lot of these are just the contracted cost of living raises for um, custodial and nurses and clerical and the other stuff. Here's the the total for plant, operations and maintenance. And then fixed charges, community service, acquisition improvement, fixed assets. So here's the summary of the use of funding for Chute's Berry. There's a total um, total use funding, a little over sixty thousand dollars. And here's the kind of breakdown of where you'll find those those changes. And here's the allocation of instruction. Then the other the other parts of the budget. Okay, so here's the sources of funding. This is the part that that mainly changed from what you saw in your last presentation is that I updated all of the grants and the sources of funding to be more accurate to what FY twenty two was. So here are the values. Here's the the amounts we got for each of these grants. I did not include school choice or Esser Esser money in here because that's being paid for positions that you're not going to see in the budget. So what we have is a net total after, oh, let me go back to that page. I am projecting the same amount of each of these grants. Usually we'll see a little bit of an increase, but we're kind of budgeting conservatively here and saying this is this is what we should expect. But we'll probably a little. And finally, the net total of FY twenty two to FY twenty three is sixty thousand twenty nine dollars, an increase of two point seven four percent. The increase is a little more than you were presented. However, the budget amount is lower because the FY twenty two budget actually had a lower value when you you include all of the grants that were in there. So the one you were presented before was two million, two hundred ninety three thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars. This one is two million, two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred forty eight dollars. And now here's where I try to get out of presenting my screen. Oh, stop sharing. So if you have any questions about the budget, here's the best time to ask.
Can I just make one thing very clear because I think you're the best, Caitlin? Um, is that I just want to just reiterate to make sure everyone heard that that the the percentage increase is higher than what was presented in the fall, but the actual amount of money is lower because of some things that she cleaned up.
Yeah, because the the real value for the for FY twenty two was was lower um, because we had more grants that weren't factored into the original budget.
Lauren.
Of course, I just want to thank you for that was really helpful and and clear. Um, and I wondered if it was possible to have access to it after tonight's meeting, just to continue to be able to refer back to it.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you doing some interpretation for us and and making things as clear as possible.
I said, much of my career as a high school math teacher, I feel like translating the budget is is a strong point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She has lots of strong points, but you know. I won't go into them this evening.
So I want to piggyback on you and then I'll come to you, Suzie. So um, Caitlin, I know you sent us the budget.
Mm hmm.
But I couldn't print it. Is that what you're talking about, Lauren?
No, I I was just hoping to have a access to that slideshow.
Yeah, I can do that.
So is there a reason why I couldn't print it on your end or is it just like me with technology?
I don't know. Did it come up as a PDF?
Yeah. And when I hit print, it, you know, I got this little like message in the left-hand corner of the screen, but uh, I can try from another computer, but there's not a, you don't have a hold on it.
No, I don't think so. When in doubt, Dan, do what I do. Call Pam.
Okay.
She will, she sometimes can figure out how to upload and then download so the document's printable. So you you can call Pam tomorrow.
Or if nothing else, print it out herself and bring it to your door. She's amazing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So I and I also want to um, reiterate, even looking at the budget um, that was sent, it was very clear, uh, easy to read. The colors made everything easier. Um, I think you answered all my questions. Uh, I did see where, you know, some of those numbers had changed, um, particularly in those final columns of one oh five to one ten, which was, and it's nice to see the, the amount is lower. Um, obviously, like you said, the percentage is higher. And I think that is, I guess it's on the accounting end, the, how money was appropriated or how it was used in the past and more related to grants. Is that right?
Yeah, so I include more of the grant money that we received for F Y twenty-two. So when I put that grant money in, which I wanted to be part of the budget, it reduced the budget for F Y twenty-two so that it made the F Y twenty-three look that much kind of higher, when in fact it, it, it wasn't any higher than it was before.
Okay, thank you. And Suzie.
Um, I appreciate that, um, presentation also. I'm on the FinCom and Chutes Berry. And, um, I would like to be able to receive the budget too, because this is different. And I feel like there's more information here that people have been asking for. The, where the grant money fits into the budget, what kind of expenditures that, that, um, add up to. So, um, I would appreciate being included on getting the draft budget. And I think the presentation would help me answer people's questions too. And that, and you know, I feel as a liaison, my job is to get back to the FinCom to keep them from, from, um, asking individually because there's seven members. So, um, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and Caitlin, I really did appreciate the, uh, beginning part of that.
That was totally Jackie. She, she made that look amazing. And so I, I've got great principals. And so she jumped right in and was able to celebrate the school in a way that I wouldn't have been able to.
But somebody's being humble because it was Caitlin's idea to start the whole presentation and, and to represent where our town money is going and to show things like outdoor education and nature's classroom coming. So it was truly a team effort.
Also, especially in these, in these times, most of you probably don't get into the school and don't get to see the students and the artwork they're doing and everything. And we'd like to get more opportunities to showcase, you know, all the work you put in and where that's going.
Yeah, and not that I want to make anyone's jobs any more difficult, but you know, even when you're looking at capital planning, you know, a picture of the rotting wood or the sidewalk, for example, before the snow, I did walk around that building twice in the same month, looking at the sidewalk. Um, and I went at different times of the day trying to figure out, well, where is the problem? But if the problem is related to the parking lot area, then obviously like the parking lot issue has to be fixed before we make repairs, I guess, to the sidewalk. But, you know, a picture is a thousand words, you know? So, uh, if we see a picture of, and Jackie, I think you remember before when we did have that issue with the sidewalk heaving up where people were tripping, you know, that would have been a really good thing to visualize, you know? And actually, one of the questions that I would have for even the buildings committee is, I know there are several people on that committee, but I would recommend if, if I were on the buildings committee and there was a problem with the sidewalk or the pavement or the roof or the siding, they should all go look at it. It helps to understand what people are looking for or talking about, but you know, I mean, that's just my opinion. So I'll stop there. All right. So. I understand. Do you want us to vote on the amended budget? And the, and the budget that's been presented?
Yeah, it could be, we can, unless people have other, further questions or they want to delve into the budget a little more. But just in case people wanted to preliminarily adopt the budget tonight, I had Pam put discussion impossible vote. So it's there as an option. If not, we can just have a vote next month.
So, and this is going to be a dumb question, but I'm just going to ask it. Um, did we already vote on the budget?
I think you gave sort of a preliminarily, prelimin, boy, I can't speak tonight, preliminary approval. At our last meeting, we had that long discussion about the principal being, you know, calendar year as opposed to today's work. And we, we did talk about, um, approving the budget as is. There was a slight change with all Caitlin's detective work and calculations. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were voting in the right budget, so to speak.
Okay. Well, that does make me feel better. Um, I just thought maybe it's not just technology that's going.
I, I just didn't want there to be that nuance of, well, the balance was different or the percentage was different. And so we have it here if we want to do a preliminary vote.
And we can never go wrong by voting again.
Yes.
All right. So Suzie, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to say the FinCom is plugging numbers into a draft of the budget. And so then the juggling begins. And so it would be good to have whatever number you want represented, um, in hand.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, um, do any of you members, school committee members have, um, a motion that you'd like to present with the final budget amount? Do we need that number? I, I do have that number if I'm not mistaken. Lauren, do you want to make a motion to accept or approve the amended budget as presented tonight?
Yes, I would like to make that motion. Exactly.
Okay, in the sum of, and Caitlin, please correct me if I'm wrong, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars?
That she, she gave.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, there you are. People keep moving around on the screen.
Yeah, I left for a second to go check that number and then I couldn't find where the zoom was to unmute it.
Okay. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
Can I get that number again really quick?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Two million, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. But Caitlin, am I good? All right. So we need a second.
A second.
All right. And roll call vote. Azai?
Martel, I.
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick one, I.
Solomon, I.
All right. Again, thank you for the remarkable work. That's
Thank you.
Remarkable. Am I right, guys? Everybody? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's phenomenal. All right. Any new business or items to discuss this evening? I'm just going to throw one out there. And it's just to keep it on the agenda and to bring Caitlin into the loop and maybe Jennifer and Jackie have already done so, but, school choice funds and sort of where we want to be with school choice moving forward and, and how we use those funds or what we use them for. As I said at the last finance committee meeting, I mean, obviously I do feel responsible and the chair and I was honest. Uh, you know, we've been in this crazy pandemic. Uh, we're not meeting together. Funds are being used for different things, the, you know, grants and the S R funds. So I don't think we've really had time to think about it. And now we have a new, you know, director of finance and operations. And Caitlin can compare and contrast, not that we're going to do what anyone else does, but it might be good over time to begin to look at how do we want to use these funds? Okay, so this isn't really for a discussion tonight. It's just to put out there that this is something we should be thinking about and it would be wonderful for that to come from administration as a proposal. Okay? That's all right with everybody? All right. Okay, so reports, superintendent report.
Yep. Good evening. Um, first off, as you know, I have a wonderful leadership team. I've probably said it umpteen times during the pandemic. And the frosting on the gluten-free cupcake is Caitlin. She is just wonderful and perfect. And we're, we're just, she fit right in. It feels like she's been here forever and so easy to work with and, um, happy to have her here. As we all are in Chutes Berry, we're in the midst of budgets everywhere. Um, and so Caitlin and I have been mostly Caitlin, but I'll use the royal weed diving into the budgets and working really hard. And working with the towns to make sure that we are providing the best education while being fiscally responsible. Pam and I are busy wrapping up the school attending children report. We report on all of the students in all five towns from grade K all the way through twelve. We recently got, um, or I recently got at eight o'clock on Tuesday, uh, please come to the commissioners meeting at eight thirty today. So did a little rearranging of the schedule because you don't tell your big, big boss, no. Um, and he was going to make the announcement that, um, Massachusetts was changing the protocol for, um, testing. And I sent out the letter today that we sent out to the community. We feel really strongly that we're doing the best possible mitigation of COVID. And we felt strongly as a leadership team and after consulting with the nurses that we're not ready to abandon contact tracing. We're not ready to abandon what we think we're doing really well. Um, and our schools are small and yes, it is a lot of work for our nurses. They're amazing. But it's working and we're going to keep doing that. So we will not be, um, following the newer option that the state is providing. We will continue to do what we are doing in Union twenty-eight. And that's my report for this evening and I can take any questions or comments if people have them. And P S, I can still smell the stink bug.
Lauren.
Okay, there. I, I want to just say that I appreciate that choice. I think it, um, without speaking to decisions that other places make, that being smaller schools, I think it's, provides a lot of, of safety and security that is, that will be much appreciated. Um, and I also just want to, uh, say that great thanks to our nurse because she's great and has been working, um, in a way she probably never anticipated when she took the job. So.
Thank you for your words, Lauren. It feels nice and we receive them with gratitude.
And pass them on. Great. Thank you, Lauren. All right. If there are no other questions for Jennifer, let's move to director of finance and operations. If there's anything else you'd like to add, Caitlin, I know you've already talked about, uh, the budget and such, but go ahead.
Um, I'm nothing more to add. Um, I'm really excited to be here and thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you for being here. All right, principals report.
Yeah, I, I, uh, sent it out a little earlier. I, a lot of what I would report on has already been shared, um, but we do have, uh, I have an update that, uh, over ninety percent of our students now and almost a hundred percent of our staff participate in the weekly PCR testing. Chutes Berry is by far the highest amount of participating students and staff in the union. Um, and this week we had no positive pools, which is pretty amazing. Um, and, uh, I say that because, um, I just wanted to do a public shout out, um, to our families because I really feel like one of the, one of the silver linings of COVID, and we do try to find them, is that the communication and honesty between families and the nurse and myself and the teachers is very strong where we're, where people are calling and asking and checking to make sure like, should they come? Shouldn't they come? How many days? What am I supposed to do? I want to make sure I'm doing the right thing. Um, and the fact that we have like a billion pools because we only can have three kids in a pool. And that none of them came back positive is a big testament to the fact that people were not in school that maybe shouldn't have been in school or we caught things early or people were working together to make sure that it was safe. And I just really want to publicly thank the families because it's something that Katie and I talk about every day that we're super grateful for. That being said, we also, you, you saw the letter. We did ask that students and staff up the ante on their mask protection for at least the month of January. Um, and that was not a mandate. That was a request. Um, and that was made pretty clear and anyone who asked, that was also made clear to them. The majority, great majority of students are doing this and a hundred percent of staff is doing that. We're still doing all of our health and safety protocols. They're going away in some schools, but we're holding strong. And again, I think that's testament to our negative pools, uh, that we're, what we're doing, you know, is working for the most part and we're trying to keep everyone as safe as possible. And then I did also want to just do a public shout out of Katie Harrington, who's our nurse. Nurse Katie is what she's known as in the community. Um, and she is so open, honest, kind, her grace, um, her professionalism and her care for everybody in the school community, including parents. Is pretty remarkable. And again, I just wanted to be, uh, I just wanted to publicly say that. We did have to hire, as I mentioned last meeting that I was going to, uh, another para educator for the remainder of the year to support pre-K. Uh, we have addition, some additions of new students that turned three and were eligible to be able to be in the program and, uh, we needed more support. And, um, so we did have to hire someone for the remainder of this year to support those students. And, uh, this is a little bit of trivia or a little tidbit of information that are not about COVID that people would like to know. And, um, so we decided we are going to do spaghetti dinner in a modified way this year. Um, and what that's going to look like is there's going to be one seating. It's going to be outdoors. And the people invited to the seating are going to be the families of the sixth graders, all staff members and the fifth grade class and their family members. Um, and we are going to let the, uh, the students are, are going to cook and serve. So there's going to be a two-part piece to that where they're going to be able to cook because there's not going to be, you know, the same amount of stuff going on. Uh, they're going to cook the, the meal and they are going to serve the meal. And so it's our modified version of, uh, a spaghetti dinner that we're going to do for them, uh, this year. And, um, we're, we plan on having another artist in residence this year. It will be outdoors again, similarly to last year. We don't know when and we don't know who, but it's going to happen. We are back up and going with M C B A. Um, and for those people who don't know that, that's Mass Children's Book Awards. It's a very special program done in Massachusetts, but Union twenty-eight in particular organizes this incredible several month-long. I don't even know how you would, uh, explain it. It's a several month-long, uh, extravaganza of reading and activities and games and competitions. And it really, you know, I see a lot of people nodding who have had students in the school. It's like super engaging. Um, and you know, we did it in odd ways for the last, uh, year really, uh, and, um, but it's, it's kind of back somewhat to normal. Um, and so the students are really enjoying that and it's bringing a lot of leadership and fun. And then I also just wanted to share this really cute quote that a student said to me today and they said, uh, not today, but yesterday. And she said to me, Ms. Man, you know what really motivates me to come to school, Ms. Mandanza? The specials, they're just really awesome and I just love them. And I just, you know, that was out of, that wasn't like, tell me about specials. That was like out of the blue, uh, with an older student. And I think it really speaks to some of the really special aspects that, um, that we have even in a strange time going on at, at Chutes Berry. And so, um.
And P S, I was told by some kindergartners and first graders at lunch about a month ago, uh, when Jackie taught a special that I should hire her to be the specialist teacher and the principal. So yay, Jackie, you can do that.
Yes, I've been subbing, you know, our staff shortages are real. Uh, and you know, uh, every day I could be a different sub in a different place to be able to cover, to cover what I need to cover. And that Jen caught the day that I was the music sub. So no, that was the art, that was the art.
Art. And those kindergarten students thought you were like the bomb.
Julie.
I just wanted to mention, Jackie, the idea that I know that the spaghetti dinner in the past, the Chutes Berry Restaurante, which everybody loves and everybody adores, like participating in and is a great tradition that I know that in the past it's been used as a fundraiser. And I would just encourage you as a fundraising professional to consider selling virtual tickets to people who want to support those fifth and sixth graders. Because I think a lot of this community would be willing to buy a ticket where they didn't go and eat, but they just supported the class. Because I think a lot of this community would be willing to buy a ticket where they didn't go and eat, but they just supported the class.
To really, I, that didn't even, I haven't even thought of that. So that's really great. So maybe I'll just pick your brain.
Yeah.
Um, we were thinking of having a, a Chutesberry ice cream shop. Where that, where people could come and they could serve ice cream and we could say, go and eat it outside. As a fundraiser, but like I think that I'm, I'm going to talk to you about that idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Steven.
Yeah, I would just like as a non-parent, non-guardian, non-caretaker. Who spent eleven years in that kitchen with the spaghetti dinners. That if you would like someone to wash the dishes, then I, I am more than happy to help them get it going and do it.
You are hired.
All right. Anything else, Jackie?
Nope.
I'll help Steven if I, Jackie will buy me fancy sparkly dish glove so I don't ruin my manicure.
You got it. You got sparkly gloves. Maybe you just need palm olive.
All right, Amherst Pelham report, Steve.
All right, I, to make it a lot shorter, I sent everybody an attachment of the new classes. That was the, my last December meeting. And that, that was, it was really cool because we had presentations from all of those teachers. And they were so animated about wanting their classes added and we did add them all. But that brings me to last night or Tuesday night's meeting where. There, we discussed, we didn't actually discuss the budget, but we discussed the budget in general. And it looks like the, the school committee is struggling with how are we going to fund it? Because from the four town meetings, everyone's coming from a different spot. And we're wrestling with where, you know, where is it going to go and how is it going to end? And at this point with the Immerstown Council, looks like we may not be able to add those classes. We may be making some more cuts instead, but that's, we'll see where that goes. And the other piece is that we spent the bulk of the meeting speaking about the athletic fields. And the track or what is literally a non-track now. Because if, I don't know if anyone knows, but the M I A A, the, the lead on the high school sports. Has, is where, is getting to the point where they're not even going to let Amherst practice on it. Never mind the fact that they can't hold meets there anymore. And so we've got, we're going back and we're starting to really push for track replacement. And the enlarging of the infield because right now that field isn't. Regulation size for lacrosse, soccer or field hockey. And we're hope, we're going to get that going. And the first thing I'm going to do is look at the towns again for the CPA money. And where it goes from there and how long it takes, who knows, but we are starting to get that thing rolling now.
Yeah, I think what the four towns meeting, we did have the options there of, you know, the track with the turf and all of that too. So. Good. Thank you very much. Any questions?
We haven't even gotten to that point yet. This is just trying to get the thing rolling and get the engineers back in and that type of thing.
Any questions for Steve? Just a quick question. I'm not sure if it's for Jackie or Steve, but I know there was an issue with the buses. Or Jennifer.
So Steve, do you want me to answer? Cause I just met with Mr., I met with Dr. Morris, Mr. Nero. Rupert, I'm not sure of his last name. And wait, I have to get my notes because it's a little confusing. So as you know, we always have issues with the delays and what Amherst does and what we do. So. I spoke with Dr. Morris, who was fully supportive of helping me with delays. And I said, could we have five star, ten? He agreed that was a great idea. So a two hour delay is possible if Amherst is regular time. Or if Amherst Pelham, the region, Chutesbury and Leverett all do a delay, clearly that's possible because we've all moved back. A Wednesday, one hour delay is not possible due to the later start at the high school. If the region and Chutesbury want to do and Leverett want to do a delay. We would have to do a two hour and fifteen minute delay. If the region does nothing, we could do a two hour delay. And if the region does a two hour delay, we could possibly do a ninety minute delay. Okay, there's a pop quiz. When can we do a delay? So we are going to continue to meet. I asked Dr. Morris to and Mr. Nero to put that in an email. That we could all refer to because that's, my notes are not going to be helpful at four thirty AM. But I do commend everybody for trying to help us. It's just super frustrating that if I feel like I want to delay. That I have to make sure that. Scenarios A, B, C, D, E, or F happen in the region, but we will continue to work on it. And I thank Amherst for working with us. I thank Steven for helping out. So to be continued, but we're working on it.
Great. That's good to hear. I mean, it's sort of like the COVID thing. I mean, you know, when someone's sick, you got to look like, well, at least for me as an employer, it's like, well. If they're vaccinated, it's one set of things. If they're not vaccinated, it's another. It's like, I just have to get those papers out. I'm just, oh, I'm like a recipe. All right.
You need a massive if then chart.
I need a massive if then chart. So hopefully.
If this.
Yes, yeah.
It's the only way I survive COVID with employees.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for continuing to look at resolving that issue. All right.
I'll stay on it.
All right. Union twenty eight.
I'll just be, I'll be super brief. We had a meeting. I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, it feels like. And the, the crux of the meeting was two issues really. One, we reduced the line item for Director of Finance and Operations from one-ten, which was a budget projection. To one-oh-four-four-eighty. And we also are talking about amending how the towns get. The appropriation for their contribution to Union twenty eight. But it's a two-step process and it involves amending the bylaws. So we will be talking about that again in March and then in our May-June meeting.
So that said, it brings up a good point and I guess I'd like sort of a, to find out where school committee members. Stand or feel. So the proposal is that when we look at the apportionment. Of students. Each year, it can be a little bit volatile as Katie was. Caitlin was talking earlier, when the numbers of students change in a district. The number or the amount of money that they pay, that town pays can increase or decrease. So what we're, what has been proposed is that we look at a five-year rolling average. That means the numbers of students may sway, but it, it will be over a period of five years. That you'll use an average. So you won't see as much of an increase or decrease in each individual town's budget. Year after year. It is something that we do at the region. Many school districts do it and it's really to keep things. From having the spikes in, in the, in the amounts for each, each district. Also, the discussion is in how is that to be implemented? So I believe they're looking at some options like, do we do it over a two-year period, a three-year period? Or actually over a five-year period and you use, start, start using averages and do it that way. So those are the discussions that are happening. How do people feel about it? As school committee members.
I think it makes good sense.
I agree. I mean, I certainly think it makes sense. It makes, it's consistent with, with, what's happening in other districts, including Amherst. It does help each individual town, the budget portion of it. And it's an average, so. So everyone pretty much supportive of that? Okay, good. Well, as representatives, then we know how to. You know, how, to, to support that overall and then how it's implemented, that will be sort of a discussion. And my assumption will be that whatever the committee decides will be okay with, as long as we're all in agreement in terms of all the towns. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Collaborative is having their meeting next week, so I have nothing to report at this time. All right, policy review. Second reading, first vote. Do we have a motion to approve I H B A A? Observation of Special Education Program. And, and to make it easy for Trevor, if we could have maybe one person do the motions, one person do the seconds.
No, I think we should each do a different one.
Okay.
You gotta keep me awake.
Make sure he's paying attention.
All right. So Lauren, you get a mic motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the. Letters that you just said.
And Bethany, I saw you jumping at the bit there to, to do the second.
I second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Hey, is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick one eye.
Sullivan, I.
All right. Motion to approve second reading, first vote on J I, Student Rights and Responsibilities.
I move to, to approve students' rights and responsibilities.
I second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor? Hey, is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
I will speak with I.
Okay, final vote on G B E A Staff Ethics Conflicts of Interest.
I move to approve staff ethics and conflict of interest.
I second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Hey, is I? Oh, I'm sorry, one quick thing before we continue. There was a couple of changes that I made. Did they get in there? I. I should look at it.
Yeah, you, you amended it last time and you, you, everyone voted to approve the amended version.
Okay, so my guess is it's in there. So I'll say, hey, is I?
Martella, I.
Rose, I.
I will speak with I.
Perfect. Uh, final vote on G B E C Drug-Free Workplace.
I move to approve the policy on the drug-free workplace.
I second.
Discussion. Hey, is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
I will speak with.
Okay, so next, perfect. Second and final vote on the deletion of policy and this first one is I H A E, Physical Education.
I move to approve the deletion of the physical education policy.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
I will speak when I.
Good. You said I too, right, Steven? Okay, perfect. Second and final vote on the deletion of policy J C A dash one, Students of Non-Resident Employee.
I move to approve the deletion of the policy on students of employees.
Okay.
I second.
Any discussion? Hey, is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick one eye.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, so future business. Looks like, will there be a policy committee? Perfect. And then the next school committee is going to be February seventeenth. Julie, would you be willing to just be the host to start the meeting off so I can join instead of us being late again?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Union twenty eight Joint Supervisor Committee Meeting, March twenty first, six thirty. No budget personnel. Is there any, oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to see if we can put something on for a future agenda. Matt's been doing a super job of trying to keep the school, you know, clean. In, in and out. And he spent some of his money this summer on a couple of days with a tree crew. And I was hoping that we could, if, if we knew where we were with the school choice funds. If we couldn't somehow get Jackie a pot of say five to seven thousand dollars that was at Matt's discretion. So he could continue to do tree work and other things that are outside his normal budget. Because it made such a difference on how the school works.
Thank you, Steve, for bringing that up. We won't talk about, we won't talk about the, the company. That we'll never use again because that's a story in itself, but yes, I think that would be super helpful and. Uh, I, I agree with everything you said.
In that way, the, the flagpole could get landscaped too.
Well, the only thing I would say is, I, I mean, I. I'll be just direct. I always have a concern about people doing things sort of out of their scope of work. For example, I know we had looked at having the janitors put in the doors, you know, that seemed to be out of their scope of work. Or this evening you talked about a former janitor who mixed together cement and put it down. And now we have to do something about that cement. You know, if the person has some sort of experience with tree work, if we're covered in terms of workman's compensation, liability issues. I don't have a problem with that. I just worry someone's cutting down a tree, they get hurt. Now we have more than one problem.
Yeah, I think, I thought Steve went like to contract out with like a professional. So he means like, and like Matt identifying landscaping things that need to happen and contracting out with a landscaper to support that.
Okay, yes, I'm totally supportive of that. And you know, I, I would say. That Jackie working with Jennifer and Caitlin, that perhaps that should be a budget item. That we should have money in the budget allotted for those kinds of things. Again, I'm, as much as I think it's great to use school choice funds, I want to be careful how we use them. So. But that's, again, administration needs to help walk this fine path of. You know, the best way to utilize those funds. And I will say that some towns do use the funds to support the budget. So I'm not opposed to that, but again, we need to have a clear understanding of what is it going to be, you know? Do we leave, there's so much money in the budget, once it's over that, that money go, meaning if you have so much money into a school choice account. Say that number is two hundred thousand and any money that goes over that, that goes towards the budget of the school. I'm throwing out as an example, I haven't, I just threw those numbers out. But I'm just saying, that's what, I'm hoping that you all will come up with some sort of plan on how we're going to use those funds. And things like maintenance of shrubs and trees and those kinds of things should be budgeted in.
Yeah, and just so you know, like what he has been doing is in the budget, there is summer help money. And what he's been doing is like breaking his back and doing all the work himself and then using some of that money to help support some of the outside stuff. Like that's what he's been doing, but. But I, I really appreciate Steve for bringing this up because it, I think it would be really, really awesome and helpful.
As long as we never use that tree company, I totally support Stevens.
Right. And if we need to make that line item larger, then that's what we should be thinking about as well. So okay, that's just my thoughts on it. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Not tonight.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sorry, Lord.
No, I just want to say, um, that I think that one of the things that we've talked about with school choice is just making sure that we don't rely on it when it's changeable. So I just want to make sure that as we're considering like how to move forward, if that's, if that's still our, our, uh, vision for the school choice money, that that's where we start from. And it may be that, you know, if, if we're, if we're continuing with school choice, that there's a minimum amount that we can apply to the budget or whatever. But the, the reason that, and you know this, Dan, the reason that we haven't, um, applied more of it or applied it to the budget is for that reason, because we don't want to depend on money that, that may well not be there next year. So, but, but maybe there's a base that we could have since we have school choice, we know there will be some. So maybe one of the things to consider is just having this, like, uh, a minimum amount that can be applied to the budgets so that that wouldn't be impacted by the changes that do happen or something like that. So Lauren, I made notes under future agenda items, maybe under unfinished business or update school choice discussion. And then my notes say, you know, vision, usage, minimum amount. So we can keep discussing that if that's okay for moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can put it in that same category where we have the capital planning project. So it's something that's on our radar. We continue to discuss it and, uh, make good decisions.
On my notes.
Awesome. So Trevor, I want to also thank you for all of your help with everything. You do a phenomenal job with taking the minutes. Um, you know, I, I have to say, I come from a long time ago and we school committee members used to take minutes and it was a disaster. And you not only do a good job, but you are so consistent. And you've been doing it for such a long period of time. It's, it's really phenomenal. So thank you.
Yay, Trevor.
Thank you. And don't tell anyone else this, but you, you guys are my favorite school committee reports. So.
Oh.
I won't tell my other children that.
All right. So is there anything else that anyone would like to say or discuss before we adjourn? All right, Karen.
Oh. Jackie, do you want to just stand for another five minutes or so after everyone leaves? Okay.
All right.
Can she do that if I'm the owner?
She's.
I think I'm actually also an owner.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Excellent. So if there's nothing else, uh, I will adjourn this meeting at, uh, 8:35.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a nice evening. Good night.
Hey there. You are, you're super muted.
Do you think we can stop the recording or?
Oh, good question. Yes, I can.